Good evening and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Common Council of the City of Hartford. All prior notices were sent. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask if you'd please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, Shannon.
The mayor and all alderpersons are present.
Wonderful. We have before us a unanimous consent agenda as item number four.
Move for approval.
Move for approval, President Rosniak, seconded by Alderperson Turchi.
Motion by Alderperson Rosniak, seconded by Alderperson Turchi, approving the following items on the unanimous consent agenda. The Common Council minutes of June 25th, 2024, approving the purchase of one 500 KVA Pad Mountain Transformer from Resco at a cost not to exceed $31,122 and authorizing appropriate city officials to transfer the Hanger land lease for Hanger number 28 at the Hartford Municipal Airport from Robert Sherwood to Midwest Turbine of Hartford, Wisconsin by assignment of lease contingent upon the payment of transfer fees.
Any comments, questions, concerns, additions? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you. Communication, Shannon.
There's going to be a special finance and personnel meeting on July 23rd to discuss the creation of a stormwater utility.
Again, we were planning on having that proposal here tonight, but because of some timing issues with some numbers in that proposal, we need to push that off one week and then to give proper time for then the council to review it the following meeting after that, and then we will vote on it so that, again, we get this in before the budget season is full engaged.
Thank you very much. Okay. At this time, we have appearances and citizen comments. Anybody wishing to come up and appear, you are more than welcome to any city resident. Just come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you get three glorious minutes. Any appearances? Any appearances? Hearing none, we'll go to the mayor's report. I did want to make reference to the fact that the Republican National Convention that's going on in Milwaukee is not something that does not touch Hartford. We're going to have a lot of people in the entire Milwaukee metropolitan area, but more importantly is we're going to have two of our sworn officers assigned there to help with security as well as that Hartford Battery that you always pass on State Street, that's the Alpha Battery 121st Field Artillery, has had riot training. They've been doing it for almost a year now, and they are going to be down there as well, providing security. So I would like if all heads of churches, parishes, synagogues, any imams, anybody that you know, if you would ask them to offer a prayer for the safety of those people serving the greater community and coming from the City of Hartford. So thank you very much for that in advance. With that, President Rosniak.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Alderperson Reagan.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alderperson Curly.
Just one thing. A big thank you to Festival Foods for sponsoring the fireworks this year.
Absolutely.
They were very nice. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. You bet. We really appreciate that. Thank you very much, Festival Foods, a wonderful corporate citizen in underwriting that. Thank you very much. Alderperson Garza.
Yeah, I just received a letter from a gentleman in our district relating to fireworks being illegally launched and everything in Hartford. And reading his letter, he mentioned that the city is allowing this. We do not, as a city, allow this. I don't know why people get the idea that they are allowed to do this. It is illegal. It just happens. A lot of citizens do it. Not many get caught. It's just something that, you know, we don't allow. It's against ordinance, against state statutes as well. Also, in the letter, he mentioned something about ATV. We did allow ATVs to be driven in streets that are 35 miles an hour or slower, not sidewalks. That is not allowed either. That's illegal. So I thank the person for sending this letter and the ordinances that I have read many times over my years of being on the council, and just wanted to reinforce that the city does not allow any illegal activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Coler.
Nothing tonight.
Alderperson Webb.
Just wanted to say thank you to the citizens for a beautiful Hartford. They put some very nice planters in Centennial Park and really appreciate all the work that they do.
Super. Thank you. Alderperson Phillip.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alderperson Savage.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. We will go on to, there are no standing committee reports for finance or personnel, public works or utilities, so we'll go right to item number 10, resolutions and possible actions. Resolution number 3687, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute PFAS, which is P-F-A-S, claim forms, and accept award settlements, which we will pass if he can tell us what PFAS stands for. Steve?
I'll let Brian handle this. This is the reason he came to this meeting.
Okay. It was humor, Steve. I was hoping to get a smile while you were on camera. Okay. Thank you very much.
I'll get him to smile. So PFAS is, they're man-made chemicals. It's polyfluor- I can't even pronounce it.
PFAS.
So yeah, go buy it by PFAS. But it's man-made chemicals. It's in products that are in waterproofing, stain-resistant clothing, things like that, firefighting foam, and they're referred to as forever chemicals because they don't break down in the human body or in the environment. Were you going to explain that more?
Oh, so the resolution that we're having tonight is that was presented by our attorney, I believe is the top signer on that, which is the fact of as we're going through right now these claims, there's a class action lawsuit, which most of you I'm sure are aware of, against 3M and also DuPont, again, for the creation of said PFAS. And on a daily basis, we'll get emails and things like that of how we have to respond to it and different things that we have to submit and sign. And so what this does is just authorizes that I will be the one to sign off all forms and claims as they come in on a daily basis. So...
I do have a question. Would there be anything negative as to just allowing this to go right through, that it would not go through something like any type of commission or committee we have or the city council? Is that just...
Most of these things are going to be on a daily basis, so we don't have time to wait for the next council meeting or next board meeting.
Okay. So, but it won't cost us any money, is I guess what I'm saying, is to...
It does not cost us any money to have me the signer.
We already pay that. I'm just wondering if you're going to be getting any type of bills or something that you would...
No. So everything is being run through an individual law firm. This is a nationwide class action lawsuit, and so I'm sure they're receiving the percentage like any law firm would. And so, but we just have to keep up with all the paperwork that comes through on a, like I said, a daily basis almost to keep us up there. Again, for those who are watching at home, again, PFAS is a chemical which, again, the EPA, the DNR are really cracking down on. It's primarily found in your water. And so some communities, like the city of West Bend, actually had to shut down one of their highest-producing wells because of the level of PFAS that they have. We have a very low level of PFAS in our water. And, but, over time, again, we're going to have to continue to monitor that, and if they continue to change the parameters by which we have to meet, so in other words, parts per trillion is what it's normally measured on, as they continue to lower that, they will then, we'll have to continue to monitor that to make sure that we fit under that level. Again, parts per trillion, two drops of water in one of our, in our aquatic center is what we're talking about. But again, PFAS has been linked to cancer and other abnormalities in the human body. I would strongly urge if anyone really wants a really great movie to watch regarding PFAS and the history of PFAS, it's called Dark Waters, and you can get it on Netflix. It's a great movie. It's an actual, it's based on actual facts. But if you really want a great education on what PFAS is all about, that's a great movie to watch. Now, Brian tonight handed out some of the, kind of a schedule as to what we're expecting, but we do not know for sure as far as what this is going to entail. Getting funding will help us to put in a filtration system into our wells, well or wells, depending upon how many are falling above the threshold at the time. And I guess, as I mentioned, that threshold continues to get lower and lower and lower.
So they're going to do the same thing to us with PFAS as they've done with phosphorus?
Phosphorus, exactly. Yeah. And so this situation, again, over time, we're going to have to put in a clarification system, filter system into a or multiple wells that we have to, again, be able to get to that lower level. But, so Brian sent you around a schedule of kind of things you can kind of look for in the future as we address this. The dates in which we really are focusing on is 2029. So for anyone who's going to still be here, Wayne, of course, will still be here.
Sure. Why not?
But anybody else, again, these are the dates by which we're looking at for remediation of the issue.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay. Any comments, questions? Go ahead, Alderperson Turchi.
Steve, so I'm all for this, but I mean, I assume you'll talk to our city attorney if you have any questions or anything.
Yeah, absolutely.
During the process and look for...
Yeah, Ian has been involved in this from step one.
Mm-hmm.
Alderperson Phillip.
So is this part of CapEx where we're anticipating that now, this filtration, this is a significant investment to the city, and should we be looking at other chemicals that we should be doing that get ahead of that for the future?
We worked through, the EPA has a UCMR program. It's an unregulated contaminant program, so they kind of look ahead to see what needs to be regulated. So I think we're ahead of the game on that.
So just a follow-up to that. Sure. So we've got a timeline here for when this is going to be resolved, or is this also getting funding to put this filtration in? Because obviously, this isn't the thing I screw into my refrigerator, right?
Correct.
So is this, is this a UV cleansing of it? Is this a significant process for the wells, or can you give me a little overview of what this entails?
Yeah, it's a pretty big process. So what we're going to do in the short term is do a pilot test to find out what type of media we have to use to remove the PFAS. There's two different types that are working well that contractors have told us about. It's granular activated carbon and anion exchange. Those are the two methods that work the best. And so they'll do the pilot testing for, it's going to take about a year to do the pilot testing to figure out which one works. Then after that, then they'll go through the design process, get DNR approval, and then it'll take about a year to do the capital investment or do the infrastructure build.
So a follow-up to that. So we have a method or we don't have a method to be able to do this? Is this a mature process to do this filtration? You're talking about doing some testing to see whether it works or not?
Yes. There are methods to do it. We just need to find out which one works the best for the type of PFAS that we have in our water.
Oh, got it. Okay. And then, and then this is generated by just groundwater and the contamination that's coming in through the water table, or where are we getting this chemical from?
Everywhere. We don't know the source.
Okay.
Actually, with activated carbon, you can run it through your aquarium filter.
Well, I just want to understand, because, you know, you're trying to filter out, you're talking parts per trillion.
Yeah, correct.
Which is, so, okay.
And as far as the original source, it is believed to be the plants that were in Iowa, that the 3M, the DuPont, that originally were in that area that basically started the spill.
Wow, it came out this far.
Oh, it's going much further than us.
Got it. Okay.
Okay. We'd look for a motion to approve. Alderperson Turchi, Alderperson Savage.
Motion by Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Savage for the adoption of proposed resolution number 3687.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Next, resolution number 3688, a resolution approving the 2025 budget policies, and I'm assuming that our city administrator, Steve Volker, will be taking that.
Yeah, to make this a little easier, again, you know, the budget policies is something that in reality is drafted by the council to the staff, and on an annual basis, we review those policies when we are putting together the budget. We did make a couple of changes, but I made it easy on you, and I highlighted those.
Thank you.
So if you look primarily programmatic policies for long-term, which is page 88, item number two, we made some changes there. Item number four and number six, made some changes. Then you go down to A9 and under nine, number nine, there's some changes. And I'd like to go over one of those with you, because I think it's something we should talk about. The item number nine, again, I'm looking at page A9, N9, number nine, we want to review our, in our CIP, for as long as I've been here, a little over nine years now, but the, no, okay. When you look at our road projects, it's divided basically three ways. Okay? So there's the tax levy, which pays for a majority of all the road, the curb, the gutter, the sidewalk, the terrace, and the subsurface up to the pipe. In the past, we've always just charged the pipe to the utilities. So the storm or the water would pay for the pipe. The sewer would pay for their pipe. In many communities, including most of them that I have been a part of in the past, there is a charge to what they call funnel that cost. So let's give an example. In a basic road, you have your water main. Water main will be roughly six feet underground. So the funnel basically is if I was just to replace just the sewer or the water line, you'd have to create this funnel to have a safe entry area. And so across the top, based on a level of about six feet down, you're having about eight to 12 feet of road out of a total 66 feet width in a right-of-way, in which would actually be, should be charged back to the water, just because if all we're doing is doing that, that portion of it would be charged back to the water. Sewer, same thing. You'd be funneling a portion of the total road project to the sewer. In the past, we hadn't done that. So what was happening is, we had roads that were, had a PESR rating, which again is the quality of the road, a rating that we have to do every two years. And the PESR rating might have been three or four, on occasion, a five. But the subsurface, the utilities underneath were horrible, and we had to, we had to address those first.
Could you just take a minute to explain that for people who might not know that PESR rating?
Yeah. So every two years, the DOT requires that we go out and review each road for cracks, pitting, heaving, totally, any deterioration to the road surface, which would cause accidents, which could cause unevenness in the road, would cause water shed to go a different direction than it should be. So the PESR rating is given on a scale of one to 10. Now, we have no roads that are ones or twos. We do have some threes, some fours, and our average right now is roughly around a five to six. That's pretty average for communities of our size to have about an average of about six on a PESR rating. Some are much worse and some are much better than that. So that being said, but we always try to address, first of all, those roads that are, when we do a total reconstruction, and we do two of them a year, we look at the road condition, the PESR rating, the condition of the utility, so the water. How many water main bricks have we had in that area in the last 10 years? We look at the sewer. Have we had any sewer cracks or issues regarding that? And so we look at all these factors and also stormwater. If we've ever had, we televise them, and if we find that there's some issues with stormwater, which again is not a pressured pipe, but it is nonetheless underground. If we have any issues like that, then we, again, will rate that road to be replaced on a higher level than one that doesn't have those issues. So what we're proposing is that in the future, starting in 2026, because we already borrowed for 24 and 25 projects when you borrowed the last time, so starting in 2026, what we'd take a look and do is this. If we find a road that actually, the water sewer and utilities underneath are the problem, they're horrible, got a lot of water main breaks, we know we've got a lot of I and I infiltration, basically, of stormwater getting into these pipes, then, but the road is still in decent shape, it's a five or above, then what we would do is we'd then charge back those utilities, that one quarter of that cost for the road and the, and the infrastructure that's above the ground. It's a fair way to do it, and of course, it's going to charge more to the utilities than we have in the past, rather than charging it to the taxpayers. Is it a horse apiece? Is it, you know, in one pocket, out the other kind of thing? It can be, but again, it's more just for the fact of we're not replacing really good roads just for the fact of utilities. So anyways, that is a new budget policy that we are looking to, that I am looking to add to it. It will change how many roads we get to do. Sometimes it could be positive, sometimes it could be negative, but it will, it should and will reduce our overall debt, which is kind of a part of this whole project. So that's what that's all about. I'm willing to answer any questions you have on this change in policy. Yes?
Yeah. Alderperson Webb.
So if there were sewer problems and water problems, could you potentially charge 50%? Like 25 to the sewer and 25 to the water?
Under the cone process or the filter process, the funnel process, it's basically, it comes out roughly to 25% of the total 66 feet of right-of-way that they would use. If we went 50/50, you're really charging them more than it's worth, than they've actually impacted.
So it's 25% total to utilities? If like there are problems with both, then they would get 12 and a half and 12 and a half effectively?
Yeah. So I mean, if we're going to replace, again, the whole road, it would be a 25, so 25% would be water, 25% sanitary sewer, 25% would be storm sewer if we create a stormwater utility, and then the 25% would go on the tax roll through geo-debt. Now, keep in mind, all the other utilities pay with cash. The only one who pays with debt is the levy or general fund.
So just to be clear, like...
I understand your thing.
For a particular road, like up to 75% could be paid by utilities based on...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. I'm sorry if I didn't answer your question correctly.
Yeah.
No, I think he and I were going, and maybe others were going on the same thing, where it was 75% city, 25% utilities, and how is it divided among the utilities, that 25%?
Yeah.
You're saying that 25% is...
Per utility.
Per unit, and then the city would be with 25%.
Right.
So effectively, like you said, keeping it out, and obviously, that does definitely help the community by the fact that, you know, as interest rates go up, it costs us more and more to do that, and they can pay it by cash. The disadvantage, of course, is then we can look at the possibility of rate increases from those utilities to swallow the roads. So you are correct, you know, when you said, one hand, it's kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul type of situation, but there is a net positive over time when you consider the time cost of money.
Absolutely.
So that's...
And the other thing, too, is that, you know, again, it just makes sense that, again, we're charging for those things. Now, sometimes we're going to have roads that have no water because the water goes a different direction, okay, or there's no houses facing that road, right? Sometimes we have one that the sewer is perfectly fine. We're not going to replace the sewer, so they don't play, they don't pay 25%. And so it all depends upon the road. It'll be case by case in the situation, but again, overall, it's a, it's a more fair way to handle some of those situations. But again, in the end, because utilities are what they are, we may have to reduce some of the roads that we do, and we may have to switch some of the roads around.
Can you give us an example of some of the municipalities that do, I mean, West Bend, Beaver Dam, which we often use as a comparative because of the size, is virtually our size?
Yeah. I don't, I don't remember them getting back to me, Beaver Dam getting back to me, West Bend does, Germantown does. As in the smaller communities, I don't, I do not know that they...
So it's not uncommon in Washington County, then, if the other two major...
It's not uncommon at all. No. And I also did it in communities in Winnebago County also.
Okay.
Are they, are they doing, are they doing the same, basically the same percentage, or didn't, you didn't ask that question?
Yeah, most of them do a quarter on their three utilities, per utility. Some of them do thirds. So water, sewer, if they don't have a stormwater utility, and not everyone has it, but a lot of people do. So yeah, it's, it depends upon the community.
Okay. Go ahead, Alderperson Phillip.
So would this impact anything that we're doing with electrical, or that doesn't, we don't have any burials that would have that within the road structure?
No. We, when we do road maintenance, road reconstruction projects, normally, electrical's not involved in it.
Okay. I kind of like this ratio idea. Does it help us to be able to do more roads because of the budget? I wouldn't call it excess, but because the utilities clearly are holding a larger fund, would that give us a larger CIP budget to do additional roads, or are we just moving monies from a CIP into the burden of the utility, based on your logic?
It depends upon year by year by year, because it would be different. I would say probably the latter of the two is probably closer to the truth. So we'll be borrowing less because we can do less, because water can't afford as much if you want to keep the water rate where you're at.
Understood.
We know exactly, and I'll keep talking about this, because I know you're going to ask me when the budget season comes, and that is, you know, we know, we have a sweet spot for cash outlay, for capital for water and sewer, and eventually, if we do the stormwater utility. So if it falls outside of that, we have to take a look and go, are we ready to really just pull funds from their fund balance, or is it better for us to say, you know, what, we can't do as many roads this year?
And then just one follow-up. I don't know if you know off the top of your head, what's the dollar value of what we're talking about? How much do we normally spend on roads on an annual basis? I don't have that budget in front of me.
You're probably looking at, on an annual basis, we'd normally do, again, two roads, and they come in about $1.8 million in general.
So...
Now, that's just the general fund borrowing, just for roads.
Okay. Thank you. President Rosniak.
Steve, we're currently doing West Rossman Street and East Luz Street. Any of those paybacks going to apply this year?
No. None of this would apply for '24, '25, because we already borrowed the money.
Sure.
And again, under the law, you have to spend that money within two years of borrowing for a like purpose, if not for the purpose. So if I can't spend it on something that has a shorter timeframe, like a five-year, like a car, I can't spend it on a car that's only going to spend, you know, do five years, when in reality, I borrowed it for 20 years or 10 years.
Makes sense.
Go ahead. Yeah. Alderperson Curly.
Do the alleys fall into this as well?
The alleys have a separate budget, line item budget for the alleys, and that's cash. We do not borrow for the alleys. And again, we have an alley plan in which we're going to address. So in 20, this year, we're doing one right now. Actually, we just, they're going to be out there relatively soon to do that. And then we have another alley, the alley that we're doing next year is behind the mine shaft, that alley right behind those businesses.
Go ahead, Alderperson Phillip. Follow-up on Dean's comment. Are there any alleys that this impacts with respect to stormwater?
No. More than likely, I shouldn't say no. Stormwater, yes. Water sewer, no.
Okay. Thank you. Alderperson Webb.
I'm just going to channel my Dennis Heggie for a second and say, like, I think ideally, like, we wouldn't do less roads. Like, we would do the same amount that we're doing to, I'm just saying that because he's probably watching, so, thanks.
He's probably now clutching his chest at home watching this.
That appurts.
Alderperson Reagan, you had a question?
Yes. It looks like we're going to be going in the stormwater utility direction, and I think it looks like a good direction. How long is that going to take to set up, and will it be in time for the 2026 budget?
Yeah. So if you approve, and that's why we're having a special meeting at the next meeting, a finance and personnel meeting, if we get this approved in... next meeting, a finance and personnel meeting, um, if we get this approved in August, so a council meeting, the first meeting in August, the council would approve that. And then we have to publish it and then prepare it, uh, the budget. Um, it, we'll have it ready for the 2025 budget, January 1st. Um, and, and keep in mind, we already have the budget in essence. It's just currently in your general fund. So it's under engineering, it's, you know, it's already there. We're just moving that into, uh, a different fund, which would, which would become a utility fund. Any other questions? If not, any other questions on the rest of the policy? Again, most of this stuff is pretty, uh, if you've seen it before, uh, you loved it then. I'm sure you love it now. That was a joke, by the way.
Yeah, I was laughing. I laugh at your jokes.
I laugh too.
I can't, I can't hear your jokes. They're coming behind me.
You didn't miss much.
Yeah, I guess not. So, we, we have a motion and a second, correct, Shannon?
No.
Oh, wow.
How about a motion?
Okay, I'll, I'll go with, uh, older person Phillip, older person Turchi, please.
Motion by older person Phillip, seconded by older person Turchi for the adoption of proposed resolution number 3688.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Okay, we've got ordinances. This is a first reading, so we will, if you want to move ahead, need, uh, motion to suspend ordinance number 1489 to amend Chapter 13 zoning code through defining and creating a small-scale alcoholic beverage production land use in the B3 general business zoning district. This was taken up by the Plan Commission yesterday and was voted, approved unanimously. And with that, we have our, uh, city planner, Jacob what? Mas.
That's okay.
You kind of, you look alike, you know? It's the both, I think.
Get one of these.
Yeah, get one of these so you can hold it up.
Yeah, will do. All right. Uh, again, as the mayor said, this went in front of the Plan Commission last night and was approved to move forward. And if you recall, on June 25th-
Thank you.
Uh, we also had a public hearing in front of the common council for this. Again, this is to allow, uh, small-scale alcoholic beverage production in the B3 zoning district, which is the downtown business district here in the city of Hartford. Uh, in front of you, I passed out prior to the meeting, uh, we did, when we created this ordinance, we did omit brew pubs. Uh, we would like to amend or have you guys amend the ordinance tonight via motion to add a language for, under, after, uh, small-scale, so reading off the thing, it says, "A small-scale facility holding a brewer's permit pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 125.29." Uh, then after that, immediately add, "Or a brew pub permit pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 125.295." Uh, unfortunately, that was omitted. Uh, that came to our attention actually after the Plan Commission. So we're just asking you to, uh, include this as an amendment to the ordinance. And speaking with Ian, the city attorney, it's okay because it's under the purview of the public hearing to allow for, uh, small-scale alcoholic beverage production, because we didn't change the volumes or anything like that.
Perfect. What I'd like to do then, instead of going to the first reading, second, we'll add it to the first reading. Would somebody like to motion for that language?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, older person Coler, older person Curly, to, to add the language that, uh, Jacob Mas suggested as per Ian Proust. Okay.
Do you want me to say that again, as you just said it?
Okay, did you want to read that, uh, Jacob, unless you've already given it to, uh, Shannon?
Okay, uh, motion to amend to include, after, uh, a small-scale facility holding a brewer's permit pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes 125.29, to include or a brew pub permit pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 125.295.
So you're going to give the, okay, thank you. Okay. For, uh, that amendment, and we have a motion-
Yeah, we motion to approve and second.
And, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none for the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. So as amended, uh, we have the first reading. Anybody wishing to move ahead, we would need a motion to do that.
Move to suspend.
Move to suspend from, uh, President Resniak, seconded by older person Garza.
Motion by older person Resniak, seconded by older person Garza to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of proposed ordinance 1489 with the amendment.
Okay, as amended, uh, for suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Okay. Now, we move forward with the amended ordinance 1489 to, uh, we need a motion and a second. Motion by older person Phillip, seconded by older person Savage.
Motion by older person Phillip, seconded by older person Savage for the adoption of proposed amended ordinance number 1489.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. With that, we are looking for an adjournment. Adjournment, older person Phillip, older person Savage.
Motion by older person Phillip, seconded by older person Savage to adjourn at 7:35 PM.
For adjournment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. We stand adjourned.